Seventeenth to order. This meeting will be held telephonically and virtually per Governor Inslee's emergency proclamation. Twenty dash zero five and twenty dash twenty eight. And stay safe, stay healthy. The City of Auburn is holding public meetings virtually at this time. City of Auburn Resolution Number Fifty Five Eighty One designates City of Auburn meeting locations for all regular, special, and steady session meetings of the City Council and of committees, boards, and commissions of the city as virtual locations. Right, council, if you will, please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the Republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. And Teresa, if you would please call roll.
Deputy Mayor Decourcy.
Here.
Councilmember Baggett.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Jay Raj.
I'm here.
Councilmember Malinga.
Here.
Councilmember Sterns.
Here.
Councilmember Trout Manuel.
Here.
All right. We have no announcements, proclamations, or presentations this evening, or agenda modifications. We have no new business. We have no public hearings, so we will move to audience participation. Right now, council, as you know, it is virtual participation only. Participants can submit written comments via mail, fax, or email. All written comments must be received prior to 5:00 P. M. on the day of the scheduled meeting and must be three hundred and fifty words or less. Please mail comments to City of Auburn. Attention, Sean Campbell, City Clerk, Twenty-Five West Main Street, Auburn, Washington, nine eight zero zero one. You may fax comments to Attention, Sean Campbell, City Clerk, with a fax number of two five three eight zero four three one one six. Or you may email comments to publiccomment@auburnwa.gov. Teresa, will you please provide information on tonight's public comments?
Yes, Mayor. So we've received public comments from, and I apologize if I mispronounce anybody's name, Jeff Pekacek, Emily Whitman, Robert Henry, Matt Welch, Mary Ann O'Connell, Way Scarf, Steve Brock, Joe and Lori Blevins, Kristen Small, Seth Winbolt, Lynn Christ, Robert Price, and Dave Lees submitted comments in opposition of ordinance number sixty-eight fourteen. Catherine Holm, Seth Headley, Marie Anne Harkness, Donald Heltz, Greg Sarr, and Lorena and Joseph Bevlin submitted public comments in opposition of ordinance number sixty-eight eighteen. Bob Zimmerman provided comments about propane safety and structural-related safety codes. And Julian Lowe submitted comments regarding the COVID bill assistance program. Puget Sound Energy is offering qualified customers.
Thank you. All right, we have no correspondence this evening, so we will move to council ad hoc committee reports. Council ad hoc committee chairs may report on the status of their ad hoc council committee's progress on assigned tasks and may give their recommendation to the City Council, if any. First, we have the Finance Ad Hoc Committee chaired by Councilmember Baggett.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Council Ad Hoc Finance Committee, consisting of Councilmember Jay Raj and myself, reviewed a hundred and thirty pages of two, uh, twenty-twenty-one claims vouchers totaling four point eight million dollars dated May seventeenth, twenty-twenty-one. The committee also reviewed payroll vouchers for the period April twenty-ninth through May eleventh, twenty-twenty-one, in the total amount of two point four million. All questions by the committee for the Finance Department were answered to the committee's satisfaction. And upon completion of our review, the committee recommends council approval of these vouchers. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Baggett. And for the grocery worker hazard pay, Councilmember Brown is the chair.
Thank you, Your Honor. Last week, on Wednesday, the Ad Hoc Committee for the Hazard Pay met on Wednesday. I want to thank the mayor for helping to arrange that meeting. In participation as well were Deputy Mayor Decourcy and Councilmember Jay Raj. We had a good discussion with grocery store business interests, and we learned some things, and it was a useful discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. All right, moving to the consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered by the City Council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. Deputy Mayor Decourcy.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Councilmember Trout Manuel.
I second that, Mayor.
Thank you. Deputy Decourcy.
Thank you, Mayor. On the consent agenda for this evening, we have the minutes of the May third, twenty-twenty-one regular council meeting and the claims vouchers and payroll vouchers as described and recommended for approval by council, and Councilmember Baggett.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? All those in favor of the consent agenda, please unmute and say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed, please say no. Consent agenda passes. We have no unfinished business this evening, so we will move right into the ordinances. Ordinance number sixty-eight fourteen, an ordinance adding new chapters to Title III of the Auburn City Code, Revenue and Finance, to be known as Business and Occupation Tax, Chapter Three Point Five Three, and Business and Occupation Tax Administrative Code, Chapter Three Point Five Four, providing for a referendum process and providing a separability clause and an effective date. And do we have a staff presentation at tonight, Jamie?
There was no presentation for tonight. I didn't have any new information that had been requested, but I am available for any questions, if there are any.
All right, thank you. Right, do we have a motion? We have a motion. Councilmember Sterns.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move to adopt ordinance number six eight one four.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown.
I'll second that motion, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilmember Sterns.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm slow on the Zoom tonight. Thank you, Your Honor. The ordinance that we're considering allows for a new Auburn City Code, which would detail a business and occupation tax and related administrative provisions that would go into effect on January first, two zero two-two. The purpose of the ordinances is to address the long-term general fund fiscal stability issues identified through the City of Auburn's budgeting and forecasting process.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from council? Count, Deputy Mayor Decourcy.
Thank you, Mayor. And everybody, please bear with me. First, on this ordinance, I definitely want to thank Jamie Thomas for all of her diligence, her hard work, her working along with council, her communications with us, the presentations that she's done, the effort that she's done within the business community, and all the other items that have been there to present this ordinance to us tonight. I first want to say that, as we're aware, the current Bino budget was adopted by council with an assumption that included a Bino tax provision. This assumption requires additional information, research, data, analysis, review, communications, conversations, presentations, and discussion to provide for final decision-making by this council. There were a series of virtual meetings that were held with the chamber membership. I attended eight out of nine of those virtual meetings with the chamber business members on the proposed tax. The message from the business community at that time was there was no support for local Bino tax presently. And just as a reminder, the membership with the chamber represents a small percentage of businesses that are located in the City of Auburn. Since those virtual meetings, it is my understanding that the lack of support for Bino tax has not significantly changed within the business community. Yes, there are businesses that would support this measure. I have also received calls from businesses that are completely opposed to this tax. And I did have one conversation with a local business owner who was definitely in support of this tax. As of last week, Governor Isley announced the plan to reopen the state one hundred percent if everything stays as it is now. As of June thirtieth, we will be open. However, that does not mean that businesses automatically flip a switch and it becomes business as usual that was prior to the pandemic shutdown and where restrictions are put in place. Businesses have reported it could take two years or more to make up losses and to fully recover from the pandemic, even with receiving the PPP grants and the city grants to help businesses survive. Now we're beginning to experience a rise in consumer goods pricing that in some cases reflect double-digit percentage increases. Businesses are also reporting they're experiencing a labor shortage with the reopening plan. As people have not committed to returning to work yet, others may not come back to work until the end of the benefits they receive in unemployment. And others will have other employment decisions to make now that they may even have more job choices. Also, with the current increase in inflation has been reported, consumer confidence may be affected, leading to reduced consumer spending and perhaps less disposable income as prices continue to rise that also potentially may affect businesses' business profitability. With our city budget situation, the Bino tax legislation presentations, during that time, I suggested to council that we take a look at and conduct a budget review to see what a potential twelve percent budget cut would look like. And as a reminder, that is not the mayor's responsibility. That is not the department director's responsibility. We, as a council, responsible for policy and budget. It is our primary responsibility to conduct that analysis if we so choose. There was not a consensus by council at that time to do that analysis. As a reminder, we all know the City of Auburn is a municipal corporation. The key word here is corporation. We must conduct and manage our business as any corporation would do. The difference we have is by law, we must have a balanced budget, unlike the business world corporations who, based on profit and loss, could operate at a loss. We cannot do that. Yes, we definitely do have taxing authority, but we almost look, ask, must look always at what levels of service our residents and businesses are willing to accept, and if there are alternatives, if any, to providing services. I fully acknowledge and understand what budget cuts mean and the effect on services and potentially on the workforce. I've had to deal with that unfortunate circumstance with my responsibilities and a municipal corporation leadership roles when I was associated with housing authorities, and it was painful. The current proposed legislation also does not address the concern of compounding budget issues that will extend beyond twenty-twenty-two. Yes, this legislation will help support that, but it does not duress the, address the major concerns that will need to be addressed in future budget presentations and that this council will have to consider, and other councils will have to consider. Our revenues are increasing slightly. Our expenditures are increasing more, as we know. This tax, in my opinion, becomes a short-term measure. It does not totally fix the future. I also do not believe that we can continue to tax ourselves out of situations, and that other decisions may need to be considered or made. That decision-making process may be included now. Lastly, with the lack of major support from the business community on this tax and with the impending budget issues going forward, I do not feel at this time that this ordinance should be enacted. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a very difficult, complicated question on one hand. There are lots of issues at play. Unfortunately, here in Washington State, we have a very regressive tax system. That means that the working poor pay approximately seventeen percent of their income in taxes, in state and local taxes. Whereas the wealthy pay closer to three percent, people that earn over two hundred and fifty thousand a year. What we have done in this state also, we have saddled ourselves with a situation where the cost of living is greater than our ability to raise revenue through normal property taxes. And therefore, we have a structural problem where either we will have to figure out who gets cut, where we cut. You know, and we, you know, if we look at our, our budget here and, you know, in Auburn, you know, we see a lion's share of that budget going to policing. We have a lion's share, or a large share of budget going to human services. You know, I know this is difficult, and, and nobody wants to be taxed. But the fact is that a civil society, a, a society that funds libraries and schools and roads, they have to be, we have to tax ourselves to make that happen. I think the City of Auburn has spent the last decade and a half on zero increases of any kind of taxes beyond the structural inadequate increases of property taxes. There's been no addition to the taxes. We have not laid anyone off from the city that I'm aware of. I just believe that now is the time to step up and invest in our community to make sure that we can afford the police to be on the street, that we can afford to make sure that we can repair the homes for people that are, you know, in an unfortunate financial situation, that we can make sure that we continue to support the social services that our community needs. I'm here in support of this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sterns.
Thank you, Your Honor. And, and I just wanted to just shortly and quickly weigh in and just say that I really appreciate my colleagues' words. Councilmember Brown is really wise. Really appreciate everything he just said. And then also, I wanted to echo, you know, the opening sentiments of our deputy mayor that, you know, I, I just wanted to really thank the mayor and her staff. This was, you know, an issue that came up the first, well, the last, I think, meet time we all got together at our, our budget retreat. So we, you know, the, the amount of work, the amount of hours and the amount of research that the staff has put into this has really just been extraordinary. It's incredibly complex, and I just wanted to express my gratitude to the, the mayor and her staff for all the hard work they, they performed on a task that is not easy and, you know, probably not that much fun. But I, that, that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Baggett. Councilmember Baggett, you are muted.
There we go. Thank you, Your Honor. Briefly, I think most everyone, we've, we've mentioned several times in several of our meetings, study sessions, and what have you, that, that we have several of our revenue items that are going to be sunsetting. Those are revenues that, as explained by Deputy Mayor Decourcy, are no longer going to be with us. We do have to make that up because our city is in a growth mode. We have to make up that revenue, and nobody hates taxes any more than I do. I'm a taxpayer here in the city, just like everybody on the council and many of our staff members. But there are very little revenue sources that are available to us. And I, I really appreciate the Finance Department, Jamie Thomas, Kevin Fuhrer, and, and the staff for all of the iterations that we have sent them back to, to review and analyze. And those are all the ones that Deputy Mayor Decourcy mentioned, and they were numerous, believe me. So it was without too much ado here. We, we looked at every one of the options that we had available to us and to try to be as fair as possible to those small businesses and the large businesses as well, to fairly inequitably try to come up with a solution. However, I, I have to say that we, we kind of exhausted most of the avenues that are available to us, and if we don't get started now, like Councilmember Brown said, we're not going to be in a very good shape here in the out years coming in twenty-twenty-three and beyond. So we need to really make up the, the deficit that we're going to be facing in these out years. And it's, I will be voting for this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Troutman.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I also would like to thank Jamie for all the work that she has done and all the other staff members that had to do all the research up for us and bring it back to council. But I couldn't say it any better than what Mr. Decourcy said, how, you know, the COVID really did us in, and the COVID was something that we didn't anticipate, and it really hurt a lot of the businesses, and it's still hurting our, our businesses. And I, I'm not going to re-echo everything that all three or four of my other council members says, but I don't feel that it's the right time for us to be doing this right now because as we, we don't really know what's going to happen. We don't really know if the COVID's completely over and when the businesses are going to be open fully. I would hate to have a setback and not, and have some of our businesses not be able to come through on paying these taxes and stuff. So I, for that reason, I am voting against this tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Jay Raj.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would like to thank Jamie, Director Thomas, and her team for helping us understand the, the state of the city is at this point and going forward in the next few years. I believe we have to start somewhere, and this is a good place to start. And if we don't do anything about it, we may end up going into the red, and that won't be, won't be good for our city. So with that said, I totally agree with Councilmember Baggett and Councilmember Brown for what they said because I do believe that we need to move forward with this resolution. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. There any more comments or questions by council? All right, hearing none. If you would all unmute, all those in favor of ordinance number sixty-eight fourteen, please say aye.
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 All opposed, please say no.
No.
No. Right, motion passes for, excuse me, five to two. All right. Moving on to ordinance number sixty-eight eighteen, an ordinance protecting the health, safety, and prosperity of grocery workers and the general public during the existing state of emergency. Do we have a motion? Councilmember?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to make amendment.
Miss, we can't amend until the motion is on the table. Councilmember Brown had his hand raised, I believe, to make a motion.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would like to move adoption of ordinance number sixty-eight eighteen.
Thank you. Councilmember Sterns.
I'll, I'll second that.
Thank you. Right. Yes.
Sorry.
Jay Raj.
I'm sorry, I should have raised my hand. I'd like to make a motion to make amendments to the ordinance number six eight one eight.
Okay. Do you, is it one amendment, or is there more than one amendment?
There's actually two amendments.
Okay, do you have pages, page numbers, or anything that you would like council to follow along with?
Basically, I have section and definitions and under which section. And I can.
I'm just trying to make this so council can follow along with you. But do you, if, if you want to make the motion, and then we can go back through, and you can provide us with page numbers and detail.
Okay, I can do that. All right, on section one, under definitions.
Go ahead and make the motion, and then we can, and then you can give us the explanation after there's a second on the motion.
Okay. Like to make a, like to make a motion to amend ordinance number six eight one eight. Do I need to say where and what?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
You have to have the detail for the, for the.
All right. So, section one definitions, under grocery business, subsection one, strike two fifty and add five hundred. Section three, employer coverage.
Councilmember, can you, can you hold on just a moment so council members can find their place? I'm looking through as well.
Section one.
Can identify the page numbers.
The first one is eighty-three.
Okay. All right, so that is, okay, under section one definitions, under grocery business means a retail store operating in Auburn, that.
Right.
Item one.
Item one, subsection one. Strike two fifty and add five hundred. And section three, which is on page eighty-four, strike two fifty and add five hundred. And finally, on section four, on page eighty-five, strike all four dollars in paragraph and add three dollars.
Section four.
On page eighty-five.
Okay.
And eighty-six as well, so. And eighty-six as well, so.
All right, so page, okay, section four. So are the is that the is that the amendments that you're asking?
Yes, that's all the amendments that I'm asking for.
All right, so under section one, page eighty-three, under grocery business, item one, it would say it has five hundred or more employees worldwide.
Yes.
And is primarily engaged in retailing groceries for off-site consumption, including but not limited to the sale of fresh produce, meats, poultry, fish, deli products, dairy products, canned and frozen foods, dry foods, beverages, baked foods, and/or prepared foods. All right, that is page eighty-three, section one, and then page eighty-four, section three, under employer coverage, item A, for the purposes of this ordinance, covered employers are limited to grocery businesses that employ five hundred or more employees worldwide, regardless of where those employees are employed, including but not limited to chains or integrated enterprises. And then on page eighty-five, section four, hazard pay requirements, it would read employers shall provide each employee with hazard pay at a rate of three dollars per hour for each hour worked in Auburn. No employer shall, as a result of this ordinance going into effect, take steps to reduce employee compensation so as to prevent in whole or in part employees from receiving hazard pay at a rate of three dollars per hour for each hour worked in Auburn in addition to those employees' other compensation. Employers shall maintain records to establish the reasons for any reduction in employee compensation. Employers bear the burden, the proof to show that the additional compensation is hazard pay for the purposes of working during the COVID nineteen emergency. Is that the is that the?
That is exactly it. Thank you very much, Your Honor.
Thank you. All right, Councilmember Brown, did you want to second that?
Actually, Your Honor, I would like to make a point or a point of inquiry here.
I think we need to have the second before there's any discussion. The motion needs to have a second before we can move into discussion on it.
I'm not prepared to second the motion at this.
All right. Do we have a second? If there is no second, the motion to amend will die on the floor. Is there any motion to second the amendment? All right, I am not seeing any. Councilmember Jay Raj, the motion to amend does not have a second in order to be considered by council. Now, Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would move to amend the motion for the the size of the employment base for these businesses, exactly the way Councilmember Jay Raj tried to amend the motion.
So wanting the the employment numbers to be five hundred in section one, page eighty-three, and also section three on page eighty-four, both of those moving from two hundred and fifty employees to five hundred employees, is that correct?
Yes, Your Honor.
All right. Is there a second to Councilmember Brown's amendment? Councilmember Sterns.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All right, discussion, council on the amendment. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Councilmember Brown.
Yes, thank you, and I appreciate Councilmember Jay Raj making the amendment. I had wanted to make a point of order that we handle these one at a time so that we could, that they're related, but they're not the same. And so I think we should consider these amendments one after the other. So that was my point. I think that this is a reasonable accommodation for stores that may not be the corporate giants that are engaged in stock buybacks and multimillion-dollar raises for executives. That is, I think, who can afford to pay hazard pay, and that's who I think should be paying the hazard pay. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from council on the amendment? Right, seeing none. All those in favor of the amendment, which would delete the number two hundred and fifty employees from section one, page eighty-three, and replace it with five hundred employees. Likewise, on page eighty-four, section three, the number of employees would be increased from two hundred and fifty to five hundred employees worldwide. All those in favor of this amendment, please unmute and say aye.
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 All opposed, please unmute and say no.
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 All right, I think we're going to have to do a a voice call-out vote, because I am not certain what the for and against were. So let me start with Deputy Mayor Decorse.
No.
Councilmember Trout Manuel.
No.
Councilmember Baggett.
No.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Jay Raj.
Yes.
Councilmember Sterns.
Yes.
And Councilmember Malinga.
No.
Right, the motion to increase the employment count from five hundred or from two hundred and fifty to five hundred has failed. All right, we will now go to the original ordinance that has no amendment, unless there are other amendments that council wants to consider at this point. Hearing none, all those in favor of ordinance number six eight one eight, please unmute and say aye.
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 Council, right now, I've heard two ayes. Is that correct? All opposed, please unmute and say no.
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 All right, I'm going to do a voice call on this one as well, because these are these are very important that we get this correct. Deputy Mayor Decorse.
No.
Councilmember Trout Manuel.
No.
Councilmember Baggett.
No.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Jay Raj.
Yes.
Councilmember Sterns.
Yes.
And Councilmember Malinga.
No.
Okay, that is three yes and four noes. Ordinance number six eight one eight does not pass. All right, moving on to ordinance number sixty-eight twenty, an ordinance relating to the management of the Auburn Municipal Airport, repealing chapters two point one eight and section twelve point five six point zero one zero, and amending sections within chapters two point three three, twelve point zero two, and twelve point five six of the Auburn City Code. Councilmember Sterns. Councilmember Sterns, you're muted.
Sorry, sorry, Your Honor. I move to amend ordinance number six eight two zero.
Move to adopt?
Adopt.
Okay.
I've got amendments on the mind.
After tonight, I just want to make sure that that we're all talking about the same thing. Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Jay Raj.
I'll second that motion, Your Honor.
Thank you. Is there, excuse me, Councilmember Sterns.
Thank you, Your Honor. This ordinance modifies a variety of code sections related to the Auburn Airport management, so we can address the changes in the management structure from contracted services to city employees, and to address obsolete language and to provide clarifications.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of ordinance number sixty-eight twenty, please say aye.
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 All opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Ordinance number sixty-eight twenty-one, an ordinance relating to the operations of the Auburn Municipal Airport, repealing chapter eight point three six and various sections of chapter twelve point five six, amending various other sections of chapter twelve point five six, and adding a new section to the Auburn City Code. Councilmember Sterns.
Okay, good. I move to adopt ordinance number six eight two one.
Thank you. Councilmember Baggett.
I'll second that, Your Honor. Thank you.
Councilmember Sterns.
Thank you, Your Honor. This ordinance also modifies a variety of code sections related to the Auburn Airport operations, and are proposed to address the changes in management structure from contracted services to city employees and added new section regarding derelict aircraft.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from council? Hearing none, if you would please unmute, all those in favor of ordinance number sixty-eight twenty-one, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. The ordinance ordinance number sixty-eight twenty-one passes. Moving to resolutions, resolution number five five nine three, a resolution reviewing a schedule of prices for services provided by the Auburn Valley Humane Society to ensure competitive service prices. Do we have a motion? Councilmember Jay Raj. Councilmember Jay Raj, you are muted.
I had it unmuted. They muted me. Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion on resolution number five five nine three to adopt it.
Thank you. Councilmember Trout Manuel.
I'd like to second that, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Jay Raj.
Thank you, Your Honor. The city council reviewed the Auburn Valley Humane Society proposed fee schedule to take effect on July first, two thousand twenty-one. The city council asked questions of AVHS Executive Director Phil Morgan, and encouraged the new fee schedule to be implemented as soon as practicable. Practicable. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from council? And remember, this is not approving the rates, schedule of prices. This is merely stating that you have reviewed them. All right, all those in favor of resolution number fifty, oh, Councilmember Brown, did you have a question? Okay, all those in favor of resolution number fifty-five ninety-three, please unmute and say aye.
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 Opposed, please say no. Resolution fifty-five ninety-three passes. Resolution number fifty-five ninety-six, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an ingress, egress, and air rights easement burdening city-owned property for the benefit of Auburn City Center Senior Living Associates, LLC. Do we have a motion? Councilmember Jay Raj.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number five five nine six.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown.
I did raise my hand that time and
It indeed.
motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jay Raj.
Thank you, Your Honor. The developer has issued the building permit, authorizing them to construct the building, and they have agreed to pay a fair market value for the easement rights. The project will further increase the use and activation to this park property in downtown. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. All right, are there any questions or comments from council? Hearing none, all those in favor of resolution number fifty-five ninety-six, please unmute and say aye.
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 All opposed, please say no. All right, we have come to the end of the business portion of the agenda. We are now at mayor and council member reports. At this time, the mayor and city council may report on significant items associated with their appointed positions on federal, state, regional, and local organizations, and we will begin with Deputy Mayor Decorse.
Thank you, Your Honor. On May eighth, I'm sorry, May sixth, I attended the Growth Management Policy Board meeting. We're still meeting virtually at this time, and we had quite a packed full agenda, including approving a regional transit-oriented development that was through the Advisory Committee Charter update, and having a briefing on school sightings, as well as a briefing on equity by the Advisory Committee. The main portion of discussion continues to be the regional housing strategy and the tools and actions regarding that. You've heard me talk many times before about the amount of housing we need in relation to affordable housing in the region. And tonight, I just want to briefly go through some other items that are part of the regional housing strategy. And this is relation in relation to population and characteristics. The population growth in the region has shown a increase since the time of two thousand, and we have added an equivalent, another Seattle and Tacoma into our populations since that time. And as of April first, two thousand twenty, the region's population reached about four point three million people. And in two thousand nineteen, the region added almost sixty-one thousand residents or one hundred and sixty-six people a day. And this was less growth than it was anticipated, but it still remains very strong growth. The future growth projections is showing that we will continue to grow as a region over the next three decades. This is part of Vision twenty fifty, and the Puget Sound region can expect to accommodate a forecast of five point eight million people, the three point four million jobs by the year twenty fifty. So our housing needs are going to continue to grow along with the population growth. The most interesting aspect of all this is our race and ethnicity relationship. People of color make up about one-third of the region's current population and have increased by seven hundred and seventy-four thousand residents, or one hundred percent from twenty eighteen, twenty twenty, two thousand, sorry, to twenty eighteen. This increase in population is over twice the size of the existing population of Kitsap County. The white population in the region has grown at a much slower rate, with about one hundred and fifty-nine thousand residents, or six percent. The people of color represent eighty-three percent of the region's population growth since the year two thousand. And we also know, which has been mentioned before by council and other presentations, that people of color also experience a much less opportunity for income increases and income overall. So their wages that they experience are typically less than those of white counterparts. And also, a quarter of the households in the region are nearly half a million have incomes of less than fifty thousand dollars. King County has the highest share of households with incomes over one hundred thousand dollars. Nearly thirty percent of all households in King Counties have incomes over one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And thus, while the median household income is trending upward, there are still many low and moderate income households across the region, and this contributes to the issues we see with equitable housing strategies, with the housing needs, and with the income disparities we see across the region. That is my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Trout Manuel.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. On May eleventh, I met with our Regional Domestic Violence Task Force, and they gave us an update on the King County Prosecutor Attorney Office data dashboard. They went through the whole dashboard. They asked us all to sign into it, and this dashboard is going to be really informative to all of us that are wanting to know what's happening in each district on domestic violence. Also, we had an update on the on, uh, domestic violence. Also, uh, we had, uh, an update on the three, three new laws that were signed and passed. Uh, updates on, on thirteen twenty is modifying protection orders, and there's thirteen bullets on that, so I won't go through that. And then also, eleven oh nine con- concerning victims of sexual assaults. That has to do with following through on sexual assault rape kids testing information, allowing for follow-ups for CT, uh, CJTC requiring training to see what's working and what's not. Improving rights for sexual assault survivors, uh, informed of rights connecting to sexual assault surviving advocacy. Then also, uh, number five one eight three concerning victims of non fatal strangulation. That's a new one, and it's no longer requiring sexual assaults to receive a forensic exam for non fatal strangulation. Uh, increasing training across the state for medical personal, personnel and for ex- for ensic nurses examining. So that's, uh, something that was really important that they have not had. So the nurses are going to get training on noticing when a victim comes into the hospital uh, to see what the strangulation, uh, you know, they can see it right away and be able to report it as it, as it. It was a very long meeting because, like I said, each one of them had a lot of bullets, and then we broke out into different rooms and, um, everyone is, um, talking about their domestic violence, um, advocacy, advocate in their city and, uh, how they're involved in their, uh, nine one one calls and, uh, how are we tracking those? So, uh, we didn't get to finish the discussion because time ran out and so uh, we won't meet again until September fourteenth. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Baggett.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, we, I attend, uh, two transit-oriented advisory committees and, or boards, primarily the South King Advisory Transit Board and the, uh, Regional Transit Committee. Uh, both, of course, are, uh, talking about, uh, route changes and service, uh, guidelines, uh, that will affect both the south end and many of the other, uh, areas around the region. And, uh, I just wanted to let everybody know that I'm continuing to advocate for the south end because as I've stated repeatedly, the south end has been, uh, notoriously, uh, left with, uh, uh, minimal transit coverage, uh, for many years, and this needs to be corrected. I'm not saying that we should, uh, basically abandon some of the other, uh, areas such as east, west and north, uh, but bring a balance to some of these, uh, uh, routes and changes that are being considered and proposed, uh, by Metro and Sound Transit and other areas. We're going to meet again tomorrow with the, what we call the Skateboard, that's the South King Advisory Transit Board, and, uh, be discussing, uh, these potential upcoming plan changes. And, uh, then we meet day after tomorrow with the, uh, Regional Transit, uh, Committee. Uh, all of these report upline to the, uh, King County Council and to the King County Executive uh, with our recommendations. Uh, the one on Wednesday, uh, will be an overview of the proposed transit policy changes, and, uh, we're looking forward to what that briefing will entail. And, uh, as we move along, I will continue to report as we make progress, uh, with these advisory committees and boards. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown.
No report, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilmember Sterns.
Um, thank you, Your Honor. Uh, just, just two things. One is, um, on the, uh, seventh, I attended a, uh, affordable, um, housing event, uh, and, and it was just really amazing that the focus was on, um, permanent supportive housing, but it's just, um, you know, really, um, you know, timely discussion and, and, and really, you know, the solutions that are being proposed to, um, you know, help cities like ours that have, um, you know, an increasing, um, amount of homelessness. And, um, you know, we, uh, you know, we're looking for solutions and it was really good to learn about permanent supportive housing, which is, you know, housing that, that, um, people who are homeless can get into, but the supportive part includes all the services that, that, um, you know, will help, help the people in the housing get, um, stability, you know, get jobs, um, get their lives back together in whatever way they can, get their children back, go to school. And, and it's really just, uh, a wonderful, um, set of ideas that, uh, I know we'll probably be talking about until someone figures out how we can solve our, our homelessness issue. Um, but that, that was really fantastic. Um, and the second thing is I attended a National League of Cities, um, briefing on the American Rescue Plan. And I, I believe I sent around the slides from, um, from the, um, uh, presentation, but, uh, it, it's, uh, you know, really, um, there's a lot of opportunities for Auburn to, you know, make a big difference and, and help our people with those funds, and I, I know the mayor is, um, putting, working on that and putting together, uh, you know, a group of people and, um, oddly enough, maybe ironically, uh, one of the things in the slides is that, um, there's money for premium pay. So, you know, that certainly for the city workers, but also for any other workers that the governor declares are essential, and actually that amount is up to thirteen dollars. So, um, it's pretty interesting. Um, that's what I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jay Raj.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, I don't have anything to report today. Thank you.
Councilmember Malinga.
Nothing to report, Your Honor. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Just a couple items this evening. I want to thank Jessica Rao and, uh, the Revive Church for, uh, organizing the National Day of Prayer, which was on Thursday, May sixth. We had two, uh, two presentations, two gatherings, one at noon and one at six P M. out in the, uh, City Hall Plaza and, uh, well-attended, socially-distanced. The, the noon event was, uh, far better weather than the six P M. event where it started to rain. But just an opportunity for people to gather. Uh, there was some singing and, uh, we welcomed, uh, representatives Jessie Johnson and, uh, Jamila, uh, Taylor along with Representative Eric Robertson, and so just wanted to thank them for joining us and sharing words with the, with the audience. And then on Wednesday, May twelfth, I was selected to be part of the Puget Sound Regional Council Project Selection Task Force. That's not selecting the projects right now, but it's identifying what criteria should be utilized when scoring the projects that come before the Puget Sound Regional Council. And on, uh, last Wednesday, the discussion for two hours was around equity and what role that should play in the selection of projects. Now, there are, there are already opportunities for equity to be considered and points to be distributed on the basis of equity, but there was more discussion around whether equity should be its own category and not embedded in other categories within the scoring criteria. So we'll have at least one more meeting just on the equity piece because council, as you can imagine, uh, people are in varying, various locations along their journey of understanding equity, uh, and D E I work, and so there will be a great deal of discussion surrounding what does equity look like in the project selection. So more to come on that. On Thursday evening, we held our third town hall for the year, and this one was on homelessness. I want to thank Deputy Mayor Decorse for being part of the panel. And it was a two-hour event where, uh, we had our moderator Grantley was, uh, did a great job of, of moderating for us. Uh, we also had our homelessness outreach coordinator or administrator Kent Hay and Debbie Christian, the C E O for the Auburn Food Bank, who also oversees the Ray of Hope and the Sundown Overnight Shelter for us. There were some great questions from those watching, uh, from what I understand, that evening between the different platforms that were available, we had over a thousand viewers, and that will continue to grow as people hear more about it and have the ability to watch after the fact. So thank you to all who attended, thank you to all who participated. Uh, the approach of compassionate accountability and community is one that I believe resonated with many of the people who were, who were watching. Uh, I will tell you though, I think Kent Hay has his own fan club starting. People were really impressed by the work that Kent is doing in our community, as are we. We are very thankful for his work. Friday morning, we had an update, uh, on our community court. Council, I am pleased to tell you that we are on track to have our first community court held on Thursday, May twenty seventh, so a week from this Thursday. So we are very excited to be operational on that. There are so many people who have just done tremendous work to get, get us to this point, from facilities work to working with our, um, our King County Court system, our prosecutors, our public defenders. It is no small task to stand up a community court, and this has been a while in the making, and we are incredibly proud of being one of three, I believe, right now, community courts through the King County Court System and the great opportunities that that will provide for our community. And on, let's see, on Saturday, I attended a kinship caregiver appreciation event in Kent with Mayor Ralph at Catholic Community Services as we honored the kinship caregivers, those who are taking care of family members, children mainly, uh, and just really wanted to, to honor the work that they are doing on a daily basis. And then today, we did have a check-in with Mark Jones, who, as council, you may recognize their name as the new C E O of the King County Regional Homelessness Authority. And on that call with me were Mayor Burri- Mayor Bernie from Redmond, Councilmember Ed Prince from Renton, and King County Executive Dow Constantine. As we discussed with Mark, the the hopes, uh, Mark agrees with us that there is a huge difference between being inside and outside, and no one should be living outside. So I am very hopeful for the opportunity for us to be working together. There are far more things that I believe we can agree on and having that subregional approach, which is going to be critical, and being able to have projects that are scalable. Once they are able to be proven as successful in one city or one sub-region, then they can be scaled to a larger population in other parts of our community. So very excited for that work to continue. Uh, Councilmember Trout Manuel, did you have something else you wanted to, to share?
Yes, I did. Uh, on the date that, uh, we went to tour the new, uh, apartment buildings, I
The Verge?
The Verge. Um, Councilmember, uh, Brown and I had the opportunity to meet two of the residents. And, uh, they were very, uh, willing to give us their input on why they rented there and is what we have been wanting to hear when we first thought about building these apartment complexes close to, uh, everything. And, uh, both, one of them was at the theater, and, uh, he said he loves the place, and the reason why he got there is because, you know, everything is there for him. Uh, he doesn't have to go out of the building, and his children loves the, the theater. Then we went into, uh, the exercise room, and it just happened to be a young couple there exercising. And he also, the young man echoed the same thing as the first residence. So, uh, the manager made the comment of, he goes, he did not plan this for us to be able to meet these, uh, residents. And, um, he showed us a lot of stuff and he gave us a lot of, uh, information about the building. And I am so proud that we have that, this kind of facility in Auburn. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, that was a wonderful tour, uh, and, uh, to, to know that we have a wide variety of options for housing in the city of Auburn with more to come uh, is, is one of the most attractive things, I think, about our city, other than the people in it, but the attraction is the variety of housing that is available. We do need to work on the zero to thirty percent, uh, area need and income housing, and that is definitely something that we are working on closely with King County, but, uh, we do have beautiful people in our city and wonderful housing available for them. So with that, we have no reason for a closed or an executive session tonight. Council, thank you for your work. I know that you take this job very seriously and you vote your conscience on every issue. So thank you very much for your work. We are adjourned.